Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's election forum. My name is Lauren Williams, Adult and Community Services Manager at the Columbia Public Library, which is part of the Daniel Boone Regional Library System. And we are glad to be co-hosting this forum tonight. And now I'd like to welcome our moderator for tonight's forum, League of Women Voters Board Member Barbara Happy. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Lauren. Welcome to the Zoom League of Women Voters Candidate Forum, co-sponsored by the Columbia Public Library. Tonight, we are focusing on the candidate races for the Boone County Commissioners for the November 3rd election. First, we will have the Democratic and Republican candidates for Boone County Commissioner Southern District, District One, followed by the candidates for Boone County Commissioner Northern District, District Two. The Boone County Commission is comprised of a presiding commissioner and District One and District Two commissioners. The commission establishes county policy, approves and adopts the annual budget for all county operations, approves and adopts the annual department or the annual budget for all county operations, approves expenditures for each department, supervises the operations of public works, planning and zoning, building codes, human resources, purchasing information technology, and facilities and ground maintenance. The county commission also ensures countywide compliance with numerous statutory requirements and acts as a liaison and has oversight over many county boards, commissions, and other government entities. The majority of the residents in Boone County do live in the city of Columbia. We will now present the candidates for Boone County Commissioner Southern District called District One, Republican Fred Perry and Democrat Justin Aldred. Each candidate will have time for a two-minute opening statement, followed by several moderator questions and questions from the viewers through the chat feature. I have cards. I have cards. That will show when 30 seconds remain for your time and when your time is up. And we will go in ballot order for opening statements. They will, each candidate will have two minutes for opening statements. And we will start with the Republican candidate due to the governor being from the Republican Party. And then we will go in reverse ballot order for the closing statements. Mr. Perry, you may present your opening remarks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, first, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Columbia Public Library for this opportunity to meet with all of you tonight on Zoom. My name is Fred Perry, and I am your Southern District Commissioner for Boone County. I was first elected four years ago in 2016, and I don't mind sharing with you that the last four years have flown by fast, and the learning curve has been very steep. I'll also share with you that this has been perhaps the most rewarding four years of my entire career. Now, that's noteworthy when you consider that I worked as a small business owner here in Boone County for 25 years, and that I spent 14 years as an elected trustee for Boone Hospital Center. So you can say that I have seen my fair share of excitement. I also spent eight years as a commissioner for the Columbia Housing Authority, and I've served on countless boards and commissions, as well as working with a number of not-for-profit organizations. From my work with the Food Bank to KOPN to the Missouri Symphony Society, I've had a front-row seat for more than 30 years, learning what makes Columbia and Boone County a special place to live. Now, I think tonight's discussion should be about experience, the ups and downs, the good times and bads, all experiences that define the work of a county commissioner. My wife and I have raised our family here. We've created jobs and economic opportunity for others, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to discuss Boone County's future tonight, in particular, how we'll recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Aldred, you may present your opening remarks.
Thanks so much. Can you hear me all right?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for giving me this platform to speak on. My name is Justin Aldred, and I'm running to be your next Boone County Southern District Commissioner. I grew up the adopted son of a prison guard in rural Illinois. My mother was a union member and worked hard to support me and raise me up. What brought me to Boone County and what keeps me in Boone County is public service. I enlisted in the Army, was accepted into the ICSKelt and Early Commissioning Program, and became an officer, which brought me to Boone County where I graduated from Mizzou and began my public service career at the Missouri State Auditor's Office under Nicole Galloway. I'm running for this office because I believe I have a unique set of skills and experiences that fit the challenges of this office. My time at the Missouri State Auditor's Office gave me a view of how local government should function with a focus on rooting out waste, fraud, and abuse. My time enlisted as an officer with the United States Army and the Missouri National Guard showed me how to be a frontline leader, how to manage millions of dollars of equipment and personnel, and, most importantly, how to coordinate and work alongside other organizations and departments as a team in order to complete a higher mission. Unfortunately, looking back at the past four years, we've seen a county commissioner who has failed in almost every deal he has negotiated. A commissioner who sat before you four years ago made the fairgrounds the linchpin of his campaign, who promised ballfields to Columbia businesses and equestrian riding centers to our farmers and cattlemen. Instead, our commissioner did nothing. When his backroom deals fell apart, he ended up giving the fairgrounds, a $2 million asset, away to the city of Columbia. And he's failed on the fairgrounds and passed the buck to real leaders while patting himself on the back and claiming success. Instead of a successful dealmaker, we've seen a commissioner who votes against the will of the people and his own planning and zoning commission when the stakes get too tough for him. And we've seen a commissioner who cost taxpayer dollars by facilitating a lawsuit against the body he was elected to represent. Moreover, we saw a commissioner who undermined the health response of both the city of Columbia and Boone County, accused the Health Department of having political bias, and lied to his fellow commissioners when asked about his involvement in the lawsuit. Boone County can do better than it has in the past four years. Boone County deserves better, and that's why I'm running for this office. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have moderator and viewer questions. Candidates have one minute roughly to answer each question, and we will alternate who gets the question first. And we'll start with Fred Perry. And the first question is, "All of the candidates agree that bridges, roads, and other infrastructure are critical for Boone County. What specifically will each of you do to make progress in this area, especially in light of budget challenges throughout government?" So Fred, we'll start with you.
All right. Thank you. You know, most people probably don't know that Boone County has a road network of about 771 miles. 500 of those 771 miles are actually gravel roads. And so it is a constant focus for our, for our county and for the commissioners. Every year, we collect about $14 million from the road and bridge tax. That is a sales tax that was passed here back, starting in 2003. One of the things that I think we need to be looking at is, how do we move beyond just maintaining our network of roads to actually being able to improve our network of roads? Right now, our road tax is dedicated to simply maintenance. And we, with $14 million a year, there should be margin there for us to go in and start improving roads. We have a number of roads where the traffic count on gravel roads has crossed over 300 cars per day. That is a safety issue, and we should be looking at finding some way to pave those gravel roads. So that would be a top priority for me, in addition to making sure that we continue our progress on replacing and repairing bridges throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Aldred.
Roads and bridges go hand in hand with upgrading our infrastructure to meet the needs of our growing population. We have an obligation to provide well-maintained roads and bridges across all of Boone County, and that modern infrastructure should be environmentally sustainable, union-built, and fit for the future. That should be a major priority for the Boone County Commission, and that public service that benefits the people is the basic foundation of Boone County government. For me, that represents government in its most basic form. What I'd like to see is a county commission that works with local and state government, eliminates any type of wasteful spending, can get out to areas in the county and repave some of those gravel roads that have been closed down for quite some time, and look for ways to secure funding. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to question two, and we'll start with Justin Aldred this time. There has been criticism about how slowly the CARES Act funding has been distributed to the local level. What will you do to improve Boone County's access to these important funds?
Well, unfortunately, I'm not exactly sure why this CARES Act funding was so late for Boone County itself. We've seen other counties across the state of Missouri who were able to use the CARES Act money that the state gave them. That money will be spent by the time I get into office there. I'd like to ask Commissioner Perry, what's going on with that funding? I believe, right now, we've got it going towards schools, which is great, and we've got it going towards the hospital for PPE. But unfortunately, that did not happen in real time, and I hope we can use it to supplement things like utilities. Thank you.
And Fred Perry.
Thank you. It's obviously very easy to sit back and be an armchair quarterback. One of the things that we have discovered is that the rules and regulations and the guidance that was provided by the federal treasury and by the state treasury were somewhat of a moving target for the first three months that the CARES Act program was in place. Looking back now, I am glad that we did not rush into spending decisions because we have seen this pandemic develop and this crisis develop, and we've seen maybe an unexpected result of the pandemic and the problems that it's created. We have distributed almost $2 million to our Boone County Health Department so that they could hire contact tracers and disease investigators. We provided every school district in Boone County with hotspots so that their children could have wireless connection in areas of the county where we don't have great internet. So I think that while it has taken a little longer, I would tell you that our decisions have been wiser, and I think that in the end, when the auditors come to visit Boone County and see how we spent that money, we're going to have a very clean slate and a good track record, and we will assert the people that truly needed to be served. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to audience question. And the first one is directed to Mr. Perry, and then Justin can respond or answer in his turn, as he sees fit. It says, "Mr. Perry, why did you join with and facilitate the lawsuit against Boone County's Health Director?"
Thank you for the, thank you for the question. Well, when I was sworn in as a county commissioner, one of the things that we swear to is to uphold the Constitution of the United States. And one of the things in the Second Amendment, one of the rights that's guaranteed to all people is the right to petition their government with any type of grievance. And so when you had a lot of business owners here in Columbia start to question and challenge the science behind closing businesses and a shutdown, they needed the opportunity to talk to the people who were making the decisions. And so they went to the mayor of Columbia, they went to the city manager of Columbia, the presiding commissioner of Boone County, and the health director, and all of those folks refused to meet with this group of business owners. I agreed to meet with them, to give them a voice. For the record, I had nothing to do with the lawsuit, and in the end, a lawsuit was not filed against the county. It was filed by one person. And so, look, I think that these business owners who pay the lion's share of our taxes in the general fund, these are the people who sponsor our kids' little league teams, they sponsor the local ballet, the symphony, these people contribute to our community in a major way. They had a right to have their voices heard, and I'm disappointed that our leaders in Columbia chose not to listen to them, and that's why I stepped forward to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. And Justin Aldred, would you like to comment on that?
Of course. All I'll say here is, this did not have to be a secretive meeting in the back room of a hotel. This could have been something that was put forth before a county commission. And you needn't look no further than the emails that are part of the county record on the May 5th County Commission meeting to see Mr. Perry's involvement. That's all I'll say.
Thank you. We'll go to a question from the league and the moderator, sort of alternate. And that is, "What is the approach to stopping or dealing effectively? What is your approach, or what do you think should be done further to stop or deal effectively with the COVID pandemic, yet do the least harm to the economic vitality of Boone County?" And we'll start with Justin Aldred.
There are some short-term and long-term goals I'd like to see done there. COVID-19 has magnified challenges that were present before the pandemic. In a few short months, we've seen unemployment fluctuate, we've seen customer spending go down, we've seen schools shut their doors and transition to online. So unfortunately, during this public health crisis, we're not going to fix any type of economic health crisis until health is addressed. With that, I'd like to see a county commission that works with our hospital systems, whether that be Boone Hospital, our Veterans Administration, the local Mizzou Hospital. On the long term, what I'd like to see is a commission that works with state and local leaders on addressing reliable internet services. A reliable internet service is something that we're doing right now. You know, we're in a Zoom meeting, we're not face-to-face. And I'd like to see the county work with state municipal leaders to ensure that all citizens have access to internet for both work and education. Additionally to that, I'd like to see a strike of balance between controlling the virus and maintaining an economic infrastructure that allows businesses to stay open, workers to stay safe, and customers to stay safe. And the only way to do that for me, sorry, I'll cut off here.
And Mr. Perry, would you like to respond to that question?
Sure. You know, this has been a real challenge. First and foremost, I'd like to say that Stephanie Browning and the Health Department have done an excellent job of containing the spread of COVID-19 in our community. And, you know, unfortunately, most of the health guidelines have been a bit of a moving target. Just this week, the CDC put out information that a total shutdown of businesses and schools is probably not the best way to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic. And so there's been a lot of confusing messages, a lot of misinformation, and probably one of the areas where we have dropped the ball as a community is that we didn't really communicate as well as we needed to as a government. We found out the hard way that a lot of our government leaders out in other Boone County municipalities felt like they were left in the dark. And so communication was really the first casualty of this pandemic. We, there's a lot of things that we can do that still need to be done, and we need to begin to immediately focus on economic recovery. We need to look at the types of jobs that we're creating. We need to look at the diversity and the makeup of our jobs here in Boone County. 25% of our jobs in Boone County are in the service sector, and those are usually the first jobs to get cut. We also have 17% of our population living in poverty. These folks have been the most vulnerable and the most impacted by COVID-19. We have to start focusing on recovery and let the healthcare professionals take care of bringing this pandemic to a close. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now we'll move to a question from the audience. And that is, "Where do each, where do you each stand on the White House COVID Task Force on doing a statewide face mask order? Our governor has been asked twice to impose this, and Missouri is in the top 10 of COVID states right now." And this would be to Mr. Perry first.
Well, the, I would support a statewide mask mandate. I think that the mask has proven to be somewhat effective in containing the virus. And also, I would, I think that the White House Task Force has done a great job. I think that Dr. Birx and Dr. Fauci have been able to stand up to the president and make their science, the reasons for their science known to the general population. But, you know, it's one of those things where you have to put some responsibility on the individual. Let people make their own decisions about what they're going to do to keep themselves and their families safe. And so you would hope that in this society and in this day and age, that people would take a sense of personal responsibility to do what they can to protect themselves. And so, you know, I would not be against a statewide mask mandate. It probably isn't necessary at this point, but I think that a lot of personal responsibility is where this all starts. Thank you.
Thank you. And Justin Aldred, would you like to answer the question?
Yes, I'm also supportive of a statewide mask mandate. As I was saying earlier, social distancing measures like maintaining six feet of distance and wearing a mask are what ensures that our businesses can keep their doors open. And wearing a face mask protects our local economy by protecting our frontline workers and customers. I believe that myself wearing a mask protects you, you wearing a mask protects me, and there's a certain amount of personal responsibility that we have to see there. At a local level, I will say that I don't think a countywide mask order is necessarily something that we're going to see. I think that it's something that we need to work out with our local municipalities. City of Columbia, if they, for some reason, didn't have a mask order, the Boone County government would be a little powerless to stop that. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next question will move on from the pandemic a little bit. "The majority of Boone County residents live in the city of Columbia. In what ways do the city and county work well together, and how can they improve?" And this one goes to Justin Aldred first. I think.
Yeah, yes, it does. Sorry. Um, so, I've sat down with leaders from both the county and city government. I've established some very good relationships, and I think that ultimately, at the end of the day, both sides want what's best for their constituents. And there's a couple of common goals we can work towards. The first, and I think the most important in the next four years, is going to be the West Area Plan. I think the West Area Plan is a great example of how the city of Columbia and Boone County can work together, and there's several important factors there that we need to consider, like sanitary sewer systems and treatment facilities. We also have infrastructure issues, like we talked about earlier, road and bridge. And also with that COVID-19 response, as I just answered in my last question.
Thank you. And Mr. Perry, would you answer the question?
Yeah. Well, one of the things I would like to just point out is that I think the city and county relationships have improved dramatically in the last four years. When I joined the commission, the city and the county were involved in a lawsuit. I reached out and initiated a weekly, a monthly meeting with Mike Mathis for myself and the other commissioners. And I will tell you that the city and the county seem to be working very well together. In the last four years, we have implemented a shared road agreement that I think has proven to be very successful and taken a lot of the doubt out of who covers what roads. But also, I think the fairgrounds, even though my opponent challenges the idea of giving away the fairgrounds, teaming up with the city of Columbia and partnering with the Parks and Recreation Department allows us to reopen the Boone County Fairgrounds to the general public. You'll have to remember that it is currently closed and boarded up, but in a few months, when Parks and Recreation starts renovating the facility and the property, we will have a world-class recreation complex. And so I think there are a lot of great things happening right now between the city and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we can do one more question before we go to closing statements, and I'll take a question from the viewers. And this one, again, is directed to Mr. Perry, but both candidates can address it as is appropriate. It says, "Mr. Perry, why did you support demonstrators in the spring against Columbia Boone County Health Department safety measures on the pandemic and actually join demonstrators in front of City Hall?"
Well, I did not support demonstrators. I did not join demonstrators. I was not in front of City Hall. So that is misinformation. Look, the people of Columbia have the right to express their opinion. If, whether they're marching in regards to the murder of George Floyd, or they're marching in opposition to a Boone County health ordinance, that is just our basic civil liberties. And so I think we should have discourse. Discourse is healthy. We don't have to buy into decisions that are made by government leaders lock, stock, and barrel. There should be a little room for people to express their own opinion and to express their rights. And so, so to set the record straight, I did not join demonstrators. I did not sue the county. I did not participate in a lawsuit in the county. But I respect the right of people to be active in government and to express their opinion, either in favor or in opposition to elected officials.
Thank you. And Mr. Aldred, you want to respond or?
Yeah. All I'll say here is, again, I support the Health Department. I am blown away by the professionalism of the Department of Public Health and Human Services, as well as Director Stephanie Browning. I am not an epidemiologist, neither is my opponent, Commissioner Perry. I believe that we have an obligation to follow science, and I also would like to say that I respect freedom as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to closing statements, and we'll do that in reversed order, and you'll have roughly a minute for a closing statement, and we'll start with Justin Aldred.
Thank you. Thank you to the Columbia Public Library and the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. Thank you to everyone in the audience tonight. This coming November, the people of Southern Boone will have to make a choice between two candidates. As I've said tonight, I have a working background of public service and government accountability that I learned under auditor Nicole Galloway at the Missouri State Auditor's Office. That's in addition to years of professional experience handling millions of dollars of equipment and hundreds of personnel as an officer with the United States Army. The other choice on November 3rd is a politician with a long resume, but questionable decisions and a history of erratic behavior. When people tell you who they are, believe them. Commissioner Perry has shown us who he is. I believe him, and I don't like it. But that's not the reason that I'm running for office. I'm not running against Commissioner Perry. I'm running for Boone County and for our future here. As a county commissioner, I'll be a fighter for a county government that listens to the voices of its community and puts services to its people first and foremost. I'm running for a county government that is open, honest, and transparent. Thank you for listening. Thank you for giving me this platform to speak on, and I hope to earn your vote.
Thank you. And Mr. Perry, you may make your closing statement.
Thank you. As I mentioned at the beginning of tonight's forum, this particular race is about experience. As the late Hank Waters used to say, "I've paid my civic rent." In 2016, I promised to reopen the Boone County Fairgrounds, and I promised to restore a working relationship between Boone County and the city of Columbia. I've accomplished that and much more. On the other hand, my opponent has never paid a penny of property tax in Boone County, but now he wants to raise your taxes and use millions of your hard-earned dollars to implement his own version of the Green New Deal in Boone County. My opponent has never worked a day in the private sector, never made a payroll, never created a single job, or put children through our public school system. My opponent has never attended a Boone County Commission meeting. He has never served on any board or commission. He's out for himself, and he's more interested in becoming a rising star among local progressives than truly working on behalf of the citizens of Boone County. On Tuesday, November 3rd, I hope that you'll recognize that the difference is all about experience. My name's Fred Perry, and I'd appreciate your vote on Tuesday, November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to our candidates for Boone County Commissioner Southern District. And now we will move to the second portion of our forum, and the candidates for Boone County Commissioner Northern District called District Two. The Republican candidate is Tristan Asbury, and the Democratic candidate is Janet Thompson. We will again have a two-minute opening statement, and then audience and moderator questions with an opportunity for response for about a minute, and then we will have one-minute closing statements. And again, we will start first with the Republican candidate, who, because the Republican governor is in Jefferson City. So with that, we will start with Justin Aldred, no, Tristan Asbury. And would you give your opening statement?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Barbara, and thank you to the Columbia Public Library for co-sponsoring this tonight. My name's Tristan Asbury, candidate for Northern Boone County Commissioner. I currently serve as the Director of Strategic Communications for the Missouri Association of Realtors, which is Missouri's largest trade association, serving nearly 23,000 members. In addition, my wife Carrie and I own and operate a mid-Missouri company focused on promoting Missouri agriculture. Growing up in the ag industry, we were both extremely fortunate to continue our ties promoting not only Missouri's largest industry, but an industry we're so passionate about. As for why I'm running, first, this is my home. This is where my wife and I have planted our roots, started our business, and, most importantly, intend to raise our children. I want to ensure the future is bright for not only my children, but for families throughout Boone County for future generations to come. Second, I'm running to ensure we move Boone County toward greater growth, safer communities, and higher living standards. I'm confident my communication and marketing skills will assist me to market Boone County assets and policies while maintaining the transparent dialogue with the community. Thank you. while maintaining the transparent dialogue with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Janet Thompson, um, your opening statement. Uh, I think we can't hear you. I can't hear you.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you, Barb. Thank you to the league and thank you to the library for sponsoring this event tonight. I'm Janet Thompson, and I'm the current Northern District Commissioner seeking reelection on November 3rd. When I joined the commission in January 2013, I brought with me 25 years of experience as a lawyer, as a mediator, as an arbitrator. 25 years of serving the people of Missouri, upholding the Constitution. My experience as a public defender informed some of the ways I've worked to create better outcomes for the people of Boone County, to keep our people safe, to use limited resources more efficiently, and to improve the lives of our most vulnerable populations. I've led the Stepping Up Initiative, working to reduce the rate at which people with serious mental illness enter and remain in the criminal justice system. My involvement at the National Association of Counties was instrumental in leading Boone County to being one of eight counties chosen to be part of the Pritzker Foundation's prenatal-to-three initiative to ensure that all children in Boone County have an equal opportunity to thrive. I was appointed to the Joint Task Force between NACO and the National Sheriff's Association to work to eliminate the federal Medicaid inmate exclusion policy, a policy that disproportionately impacts those in poverty and people of color. I've pressed stakeholders to ensure that children are not routinely referred by the school systems to the juvenile system, but that alternatives to detention are considered first. I've helped to create a mental health staffing involving the court, the prosecutor's office, the public defender, mental health professionals, and detention staff, so that detainees with mental health challenges are processed without delays. These are but a handful of the projects I've led during the last eight years. I hope that the people of Boone County will give me the opportunity to work on their behalf for the next four years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now we'll move to uh questions from the league through the moderator and through uh chat. If we have any at the moment, we do not. And I'll start uh with a question from the league. Um, it is important, and we'll go first with Tristan Asbury. We'll start answering the questions, and then we will alternate who starts. Um, it is important that our county commissioners provide vision and foresight when making decisions for the county um that also include the city. What is your position in regards to the use and future of the Boone County Fairgrounds? And this, we'll start with Tristan Asbury on that.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh, you know, kind of going back to 99, when the commission purchased, or when the county purchased the property, quite frankly, it kind of been a liability working up to that. It had been managed, mismanaged. Uh, we have so many youth within the county. Um, again, Boone County Commission, a lot of our focus, sometimes I think folks forget about our rural citizens. Uh, we have some individuals in 4H, FFA, things of that nature that grow up. Uh, and they're very fortunate to do so, to be able to show livestock. Uh, it's a work ethic that most kids don't have the opportunity to develop these days. That said, uh, I think the way that the fairgrounds transpired, though they were mismanaged and they had to close as of 2015, even after a used ta- or a park tax was sought after and shut down, uh, to me, that was a bailout. There was no plan following that. But after that, it transitioned into the hands of folks that have the experience to do something with it. So where it's sitting now, uh, I don't have an argument with it. I think the city of Columbia has a great team, and they've got some great initiatives moving forward. I look forward to the development.
Thank you. And Janet Thompson, if you could answer that question.
Sure. You know, the Boone County Fairgrounds, uh, or the Central Missouri Event Center, or whatever we're going to call it, uh, has been part of my life growing up, and the various iterations of the fairgrounds have been part of my life. I uh, I showed horses theirs from the time I was about seven years old, and so that was a big part of my growing up. But now it is, the current fairgrounds is actually under the the supervision and the ownership of the city of Columbia. And when the the proposed park tax went down by a 72% um opposed uh vote, we realized that that the people of Boone County weren't interested in trying to have another park that was run by another agency. It it will be managed very well by the city's Parks and Rec Department. Mike Griggs is a great guy. He is, and he is intending to have uh public hearings to uh explore what kinds of uses that might be made at that at that facility, and it might even include some kind of agricultural use.
Thank you. We'll go on to another question. Uh, and I'll take one, this one from the panel, or from the viewers. And we'll start first with Janet Thompson on this question. Uh, Boone County does not have a permanent year-round homeless shelter. We have a large number of people who do not have adequate housing, food security, or clothing. What can the county do to remedy this problem?
This is a huge problem, and it's and it's been exacerbated. The the problem has been exacerbated by COVID-19. You know, for many years, we've relied on our faith community with the Room at the End program to to try to be a Band-Aid approach to to this problem. What we really need is a coordination of services, the Housing First model, which couples housing and supportive services is really the model that we need to follow as a community. We began that discussion about four years ago with a grant that we pulled down for the Corporation for for Supportive Housing. And we really need to to work on that and put together the resources that exist in this community. It will take um a lot of effort, but it can be done. And um, in fact, I was on a webinar two days ago, or no, last, I guess it was last Friday, with um Johnson County, Iowa, talking about this very question. There is a model, and we can implement it in Boone County if we have the desire.
Thank you. And um Tristan Asbury, would you respond?
Barbara, if you don't mind, would you repeat that question?
Sure. Um, Boone County does not have a permanent year-round homeless shelter. We have a large number of people who do not have adequate housing, food security, or clothing. What can the county do to remedy this problem?
So with our, with this specific instance, most of this is obviously within the city of Columbia limits. Uh, it's going to take funding to do this. I grew up with my father running the streets of Columbia, working with homeless individuals to to give them a better life, provide them with an opportunity to get their feet back under them, uh, get back to work. Uh, it was fantastic to see. We have folks that in many instances want that. We have uh instances right now where they don't. They're on their own. They like it. That's the way they want to be. But in order for this to happen, uh, we have to be willing, the county has to be willing to collaborate with the city of Columbia, and I think that can be done. Now, it's going to take funding. It's going to take resources. It's going to take partnering with faith-based organizations to do so. But uh, the folks of Boone County, there are no better folks out there. And I think seeing this for the better good of what it is, we can work together and collaborate on a way to uh limit what we have seen thus far, so.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go to um a league question. What are the two or three major things that you and your opponent significantly differ on? And this one goes to Tristan Asbury first.
Uh, thank you, Barbara. Um, you put me on the spot here. Uh, one of the, one of the main things, and be it what it is, it's just the nature of it. I think one of the biggest things, oh, excuse me, uh, one of the biggest things that we differ on uh that I have seen to date is economic growth out into the county. Uh, Boone County is open for business. There's absolutely no doubt about that. Uh, Columbia is filling up. We have to expand to succeed. Uh, my opponent voted against the Midway USA expansion. West area is the only way to grow right now. Uh, Southern Columbia, they're having uh their sewage is at max. Northern Columbia, due to crime, things of that nature, development, we're not seeing that. Uh, in Western-sided Columbia, it already has the facilities, or if not, there are some readily available to be installed to continue these expansion projects. Uh, so that said, I think that would be number one. Number two, uh, what we consider transparency in the definition of that. I do this for a living in regards to public relations and communications. Um, again, I'll leave it here. We just have a difference in what we think is the best way to be transparent with the public and not forget that we're working for the public, and they need to understand what's going on.
Thank you. And Janet Thompson, if you could answer the question. Uh, again, hold on a second.
There we go.
There.
I think we're okay. Um, as, well, I I think, I'm not sure that that I differ with Tristan on on many issues. I think the question is um how to approach them. I I challenge his his assertion that I am opposed to uh business development in Boone County. I am not opposed to business development in Boone County. I voted against the project out on Route J because the Planning and Zoning Commission had voted against it. Uh, the regulations that we have in place, uh, it was the application of law, um, the facts to the law that that created my vote on that. Uh, it would have changed the character of the neighborhood, and in fact, it is changing the character of the neighborhood. Um, I think the real difference between us is is experience. And I think that's the real, as as Fred mentioned in the first half of this program, experience is something that's the most important aspect of this race. Thank you.
Thank you. Since we do not have a new question from uh the viewers, I'll continue with some league questions. And we'll go to one that we used um previously for District One. What is the approach, the best approach to stopping or dealing effectively with the COVID pandemic, yet doing the least harm to the economic vitality of Boone County? And we'll start with Janet Thompson first.
You know, I'm I'm very fortunate. I was raised by a public health doc, and my brother is running a hospital in San Antonio that's one of the bases for COVID patients. And um, listening to the public health folks, it's very clear that the best way to slow or even stop the spread of this pandemic is by using face masks. That's easy. Uh, when I was a kid, for a year, I went to Catholic school. Uh, wearing a uniform in Catholic school is a whole lot harder than wearing a mask. A mask is simply a sign of respect to the people around you. So if we can stop the spread of the pandemic, then we can focus on economic recovery. I do not believe that economic recovery can come not joined at the hip with being um respectful of our our fellow Boone Countians, our fellow Missourians, our fellow folks in the United States. We need to be respectful and wear masks and stop the, or stop and and slow the spread of this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tristan Asbury, if you could respond to that question.
Barbara, if you don't mind, would you repeat that question as well?
Sure. What is the best approach to stopping or dealing effectively with the COVID COVID pandemic, yet doing the least harm to the economic vitality of Boone County?
You know, it's tough. Um, right now, you, there are, there are many citizens of Boone County that agree with the health mask ordinances. There are many that don't. Uh, my encouragement to them would be at this time is to abide by the health order, no matter what your take, because if we can limit or mitigate uh the COVID-19 infection rate, uh, that only allows us to open up our economy that much quicker. Uh, that said, the community health should always be based on priority. Uh, however, I don't believe we should have to necessarily choose between community health and the economy. We have the ability to address the health crisis while helping our economy recover. Uh, but with Boone County, we've seen, uh, we have to see responsibility to provide reliable, accurate, and current COVID nine, COVID information. Uh, this is necessary so we can make decisions moving forward. Uh, I would propose a tax, a task force moving forward made up of education, healthcare, and business leaders who best understand the impact of each of these potential decisions and how they'll affect the public health and our children and our economy moving forward. Uh, that said, I would also, and our presiding commissioner mentioned this out front, uh, potentially a task force. I never saw that come to fruition, uh, but I would still like to see a task force put together uh to utilize the funds to help with our economy-based issues at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have time for a couple more questions. And uh, seeing no new uh viewer questions, I'll continue with the the league questions. And we'll start with Tristan Asbury first on this one. What is your commitment and specific plans to clean up, restore, and protect our local waterways and help improve our natural environment?
Appreciate that. Um, I am a strong advocate for protecting our environment, and we need to do what we can to maintain a strong environment. Uh, however, we need to take into account, everything takes finances and needs to be practical in its application. Uh, if we, if we begin to implement regulations such as California or any other states, uh, we'll need to begin, or we'll begin to see a trend as where the businesses are affected. In many instances, business may leave. Uh, we've seen now that Route J complaints in regards to the waterway because of that. Uh, our businesses are the heart and soul of our community. So in regard to working with these waterways, I'm looking at the economic development side as I speak right now. Uh, we just need to make sure that before further decisions are made, uh, that we make sure decisions made are for the right reasons and they're truly viable. Thank you.
And Janet Thompson, if you would like to answer that question.
Certainly. Thank you so much. You know, here in Boone County, we are really in a great place compared to many parts of Missouri because we have regulations that allow us to regulate what happens in our in our neighbor's backyard. You know, we balance with our regulations both um personal use of property and and the public um impact of that use. In some, in some areas, there are no regulations with respect to the issuance of of stormwater or wastewater. But here in Boone County, we have those. And in fact, we're part of a collaborative that is unique in this country, um, uh, dealing with the Hinkson Creek and trying to improve the 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 water quality in the Hinkson Creek. And we're now starting a smaller project um in the Bonfem watershed. So those kinds of things are going on, and what I would do, and what I continue to do, is uphold those regulations when we have planning and zoning issues coming before the commission. That's where the buck stops. We have to uphold the regulations that really um impact our natural environment. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a enough time for another question or two. And we'll move to um one that was previously asked of the District One candidates. And we'll start with uh Janet Thompson on this one. And the question is, there has been criticism about how slowly the CARES Act funding had been dis- has been distributed to the local level. What will you do or have you done to improve Boone County's access to these important funds?
So um, as Mr. Perry indicated at the beginning of this program, uh, when I was on a webinar at the very beginning of the COVID crisis, when the CARES Act funding was first being issued by Congress, I listened to an official from the Treasury Department who's only, the only thing he really knew for certain was that in January of 2021, auditors would be coming out to check at, to make sure we had spent the money appropriately. I think that the the delay that's happened allowed us to be more attuned to the real needs of our community rather than willy-nilly sending the money out in some pro forma way. Um, this has been really impactful, and in fact, today, um, what I've been doing is working with utilities to see exactly who um in in our community will be needing utility assistance through CARES Act funding. And we we have partnered up with CMCA to have them be the conduit of CARES Act funding. And if we hadn't, if we had put that money out earlier, we probably wouldn't be in a position to be able to do that utility assistance for folks in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we'll take, do one more question, and again, that will be a prepared one. Seeing no new chat questions. And this will go uh first to Tristan. And the question is.
Tristan didn't respond to that question.
Oh, I am sorry. Oh, yeah.
Barbara, if you don't mind, would you repeat that last question? I'd be happy to answer that.
Sure. Um, let's see. There has been criticism about how slowly the CARES Act funding has been distributed to the local level. What will you do or have, what will you do to improve Boone County's access to these important funds?
Uh, right now, Boone County does have the necessary resources to rapidly respond uh to what's taking place. Uh, my issue with all of this is the the funding was received months ago. The state did what they needed to do to get the money here, and we sat at it for for a period of time. I understand auditing. I understand things of that nature. I understand auditing, I understand things of that nature. However, there are other ways to go about that. We spent over $100,000 on a computer program to keep track of this when there's other ways around it. We've seen other counties such as Greene County that have been very successful in their distribution of it. And more importantly, they've been extremely transparent in their distribution of the funds. I would have liked to see, and again, and I'll kind of piggyback off of what I stated earlier, I would have liked to have seen a task force put together. That would have allowed distributions of these funds across all parts, all sectors. And everybody would have been held accountable as such. Right now, me sitting here and many folks in the audience, we still don't know what the plan is for these funds. Again, I understand the legal aspect of it, but I do think there were ways to approach this at a much more rapid pace because we have businesses, we have other entities, nonprofits, that are hurting, and they're waiting on the money. And there is not a lot of time left in the year. Applications stop here in November. They're waiting to see if they get the money. When they get it, they've still got to figure out how they're going to spend that and how quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do one more question, and then we'll go to closing statements. And there is one from the audience, so the viewers, so I'll do that one. And this will go to Tristan first. "What can you do over the next four years to increase transparency, especially online, in the way the county commission conducts its business?"
Absolutely. Again, we have to adapt with the times. Digital platforms, that's how people are approaching things. We have commission meetings right now that are taking place in the middle of the day. And I understand that's the time in which eight to five is when folks meet. But I do think we have to be more transparent in regards to how we make this information accessible. The city of Columbia does a great job in regard to implementing online webinar-type series where you can view this, just like we're doing right now. They can view a live feed. We saw that last night while the school council was meeting to decide what they're going to do about getting children back into Columbia Public Schools. I think we just need to take a look at what's going on, and that's something I think I bring to the table, too. My background is working with digital platforms to be transparent with folks. So again, I think the first step I would take would be live streaming some of these meetings because right there, that mitigates any questions that folks might have. They have an opportunity to view that even when they get home and reach out to their elected officials to ask why something was or wasn't made a decision that is. Thank you.
Thank you. And Janet Thompson, if you could answer that question.
So right now, actually, in my estimation, the commission's meetings are quite transparent. There is a recording made of each of our meetings. There's a transcript of each of our meetings. And while, and we've even discussed having those meetings put online or in the cloud or someplace where people can access them in that way. Quite honestly, the issue has been for us one of finance because if you have those meetings put in that space, you have to pay for maintaining that record. And that's one of the challenges that we've been looking at in terms of how do we do that without, in a time of shrinking resources, how do we do that? One of the ways that I think in terms of transparency that we need to do is make sure that all of our county commissioners use only their county commission email address, that account to conduct county business. Because I think that's something that, when you make a sunshine request and a conversation has been going on using a non-county email address, that renders that probably undiscoverable. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will go to closing statements, and that will be in reverse ballot order. So Ms. Thompson, you may present your closing remarks.
Thank you so much. Again, thank you to the league and to the library for this opportunity to speak to the people of Boone County. In times like the present, facing a global pandemic, plummeting sales tax revenues, and increasingly complex issues facing our county, we need leaders with experience. We need leaders with a proven track record. I've been a leader here in Boone County in this role for the last eight years. Before that, I was a leader in the state as a public defender, as an arbitrator, as a mediator. I hope that the people of Boone County will allow me to return to this job and spend the next four years completing the work that we've begun and especially finding a way to address the issue of our homeless population and finding a way forward using the model that's been proven to be very successful in other communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Mr. Asbury, you may present your closing remarks.
Thank you. And just to take a couple steps back real quick. One thing that was brought up is the difference between my opponent and I. I just want to state that maybe I don't have as many years of experience, but we have two different types of experiences. Mine is public relations and communications transparency so much. It doesn't matter what you do if folks don't know what's going on. But again, Janet has a legal background that I don't have, and that benefits things as well when decisions are made. We'll leave that up to the voters come November 3rd. That said, I just want to thank the League of Women's Voters and the Columbia Public Library again for allowing us the opportunity to share our platforms this evening. We were kind of talking before and laughing a little bit. It's no secret, it's been a unique time for campaigning, so having this opportunity to share my message with folks throughout Boone County, that's greatly appreciated as always. I truly believe, based off my experiences, I have the skill sets to move Boone County toward greater growth, safer communities, and higher living standards. As previously stated, this is my home. I want to ensure the future is bright for not only my children, but for families throughout Boone County for future generations to come. I also believe the voters of Boone County deserve a commissioner who first and foremost is transparent and accountable. I've stated that many times, and I'll continue to hold whoever that is moving forward accountable for years to come. They also deserve a commissioner who understands what it's like to own and operate a small business, one who truly understands the needs and pressures of our rural Boone County citizens, and a commissioner who believes that infrastructure and public safety are vital to the local economy and local families. Thank you all very much for your time, and again, I'd appreciate your vote on November 3rd. You all have a great evening.
Thank you to all the candidates and community members for participating in tonight's forum. A special thanks to Lauren Williams with the library for facilitating the Zoom forum. The forum has been recorded and will be posted on the Columbia Public Library and the League of Women Voters' websites and League of Women Voters' Facebook. And we remind you to vote by absentee or mail-in ballots or to vote in person on November 3rd. The League of Women Voters also has a digital voter's guide available on our website, which is l w v c b c dot org. The League of Women Voters and the library will have one more Zoom candidate forum on Wednesday, October 14th at 7:00 PM. And that will be with the Republican and Democratic candidates for the Boone County Sheriff's and the Circuit Judge race, Circuit Judge, Division Four, Circuit 13. Again, thank you for participating in tonight's forum. And again, we encourage everyone to vote, and good luck to all the candidates. Thank you.